What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna call this meeting to order. And if we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a salute to the state flag.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. I bring up an indivisible with dignity and justice as a fellow. I salute the flag of the State of New Mexico. See us in a perfect friendship among the United forces.
Okay, and this next item on the agenda is approval of special meeting agenda.
Chair, I approve the special meeting agenda.
Do we have a first from Commissioner Edwards and a second from Commissioner Billings? Any discussion? None? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item's gonna be public input. Do we have any public input? Okay. So we'll go ahead and seeing none, we'll go ahead and move to Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Salas, do you have any reports?
No, but I do have a general question in Commissioner Reports. Is this a point where we can bring up any topic that we wanna talk about? You know, even if it's just your own idea, your own personal?
Sure.
Okay. So. I have one that I, it's food for thought and I plant a seed because I wanna see this, if we can do this. I would like to see that the county, for any new hires or any upward movement, make sure that it goes in-house first. Okay? So if there's movement from, you know, a worker to a supervisor, or, you know, a new job created, or if there's a vacancy, that it always goes in-house first. And that the appropriate paperwork is kept and recorded.
Would you describe what you mean by goes in-house first? It's my understanding that any in-house candidate can apply the same as any other candidate when it's posted. So are you talking about doing something different than that?
Yes. I wanna make sure that the postings go in-house first. And whoever's hiring committee looks at the in-house people first. If there's not an appropriate candidate, then it's advertised to the public. Okay? That gives the opportunity for county workers that have been here, you know, and more or less to say they've paid their dues, to give them a shot at upward movement, or maybe to a different job. That way they can have that opportunity to do so. But in saying that, I wanna make sure that we have a procedure where all that is kept as part of our record.
I don't know. Usually we don't have a lot of discussion on Commissioner comments because they're that Commissioner's comment. But this is an interesting idea and maybe we should put it on an agenda for discussion specifically. Because I also have some questions and comments, but I think it should wait.
Okay, and that's why I brought it. That way you guys can think about it. And maybe you have some ideas or something that I just haven't thought of, and that way we can have a good discussion about it. I know in talking to Abby, what we would have to do is make a change, a policy change to the handbook. Okay?
Sure.
Go ahead. Sorry.
So would you all like it to be on the next agenda? I can pass that on too.
What agenda would you?
The work session agenda, we can look to discuss it.
Okay. We're not loaded, I know. I know we're.
No, because it's not pertaining to any personnel type thing. It could be just in an open session, right?
Correct.
Okay. That was my question.
Yeah. I think that's a good idea. Get it on the next work session.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Anything else, question?
I gotta think about it. There was something else, but.
Need to go back to you.
Yeah, we'll go back to you. Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Edwards?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Billings?
Well, I wasn't gonna say anything, but since Javier did. We had an event this Saturday at Baton Park. And I'm getting a lot of feedback from the community on the need and the desire for that facility. And so I'm looking forward to the meeting coming up when we're gonna get a full report from the county manager on our options there. There seems to be some, I won't say confusion, let's see, there seems to be some, some people think that the county's headed one way and some people think the county's headed another. There's a lot of discussion about that. I don't think we're headed in any particular direction. I hope that we'll keep our options open. I think, I can't speak for this commission, but for myself, it's a valuable facility. I'd like to see it used and made, kept accessible to the public. I think that's the direction we're heading. And so the reason I'm making this comment is, for those who have heard otherwise, let's just wait and see till the meeting next week. Thanks.
I wish you'd love to stop a room. Hasn't been figured out yet. Well, and added to that, you know, there was a big representation, just sort of like when we had our commission meeting at the business hour. So across party lines, so there was a lot of Democrats, a lot of Republicans, a lot of mine people, a lot of community people, a lot of business people. Okay? And then if you looked out into the fields, I don't know if you saw, there was a lot of people practicing on the fields. I think some of my buddies from the seniors were practicing on one, and I think I saw kids on the other. The thing is, and then there was also kids playing, some families that were playing in the park, the strings and stuff like that. I know that one of the considerations is making that building ADA accessible. And there has been nothing done to that building. As, I don't know if you saw, there was just a screen put on the door, which, that in itself was a tremendous liability. Okay? So I did go out there and take a look at it, and I have a general idea of what needs to be done out there. And it is not a huge project. The biggest thing would be bathrooms. But the bathrooms can be easily converted to ADA. Okay? Now, the second largest thing would be a parking area with access to the door, with the ramp going up into the door. The ramp would be hardly anything because it'd be about, I don't know, three, four inches that we would have to ramp. So there is opportunity to fix at least that portion, which would clean up a big liability without breaking the bank. So, and I know here we're not gonna do anything about it, but I just wanted to put that up so you guys could think about that.
Thanks.
That's all I have.
Okay, anything from me, I guess, just a little bit that here in the last, what is, what, two, three months, three months being part of the county commissioners? You know, talking to people, and I know that I've been approached quite a bit also about Baton Park. I mean, to me, I think I've made it known to where I stand with it. I mean, that is something for our community, and definitely I would wanna keep it within Grant County, and maybe even eventually make some improvements to it. You know, this last weekend when they had that gathering there, you know, you got to see a lot of people enjoy it. And that's what I like about it. And we have a lot of kids that use a playground, and I notice some of this stuff. And I think, you know, sometimes people get into this, well, we're not into, or county commissioners aren't into a feel-good type job. You know, it deals with budgets, it deals with ordinances, it deals with resolutions. But, you know, we have to in turn give our constituents some more where they have, we have to give them a feel-good project, and, or not a project, a feel-good place to go in and maybe do some, you know, look at it and see how we can make it better for our community, or Grant County. The other part that, you know, questions that have been asked, and I really appreciate it, and I've learned quite a bit sitting up here as a board, as a commissioner, just the difference, it's trying to express that, you know, there's things, the public input, you know, what people bring to you, and it's great what we have as far as the public input and what they tell us, and they bring up the concerns, you know? And I've really learned to appreciate it. You know, trying to stay open-minded, trying to look at their points, and a lot of things, you know, we don't agree with everybody, but at least whether we're for something or against something, it's been great, and it's been a learning process to understand what they bring to you, and what their viewpoints are. And it just helps you, it helps me as a commissioner, to understand why certain things are brought up. But at the end, for me, it's knowing that we're here for the public, we're trying to do our best for the public, for what's right for the public. So just wanted to say that, because I have been, you know, Baton Park's hit, there's other issues that I've hit, and it's been great. So that's as far as Commissioner Report from me. Thing else? So going to the next item on the agenda is consideration of process for evaluating the county manager and the county attorney positions?
Mr. Chair? I should have, actually, I should have said this probably along the, in the approval of a special meeting agenda, but the only thing that we're considering today is the process for evaluating the county manager. We haven't gotten to the county attorney part yet. So with that said, I make a motion that we approve the county manager performance evaluation that's in your packet.
I'll second that for the purpose of the discussion.
Okay, we have a first by Commissioner Edwards and a second by Commissioner Billings. Discussion.
If we approve this, I know that I read through it, but I didn't dive into it. So are there portions of these documents that we need to change, or we can still do that, right?
I think the thing that we're trying to get to today is to finalize. That's the goal for today's meeting, is to finalize the evaluation.
Yeah, and so what I pictured being the motion we made is have a whole discussion on, actually, could you lead us in that, what you propose, probably with this process?
Okay, we need to cut this and talk about the process. The executive session that's on the agenda, are we anticipating needing to discuss some portion of this evaluation in that executive session?
No.
Okay, good.
The purpose of the, so what we're trying to do today, and the goal that we've had since the last meeting, was to finalize an evaluation for the county manager position today. The reason the change was made to the agenda itself is because when we talked about this at the last meeting, we put it all in executive session, and this part did not belong in the executive session. So that's why it was changed. And the part, the executive session piece, doesn't have anything to do with the actual evaluation process.
Thank you for that clarification.
So Commissioner Billings and I were tasked with coming up with an evaluation for the county manager and the county attorney. We elected to work on the county manager evaluation first because there were some other issues that we were discussing regarding the county attorney position. So that is what we did. We worked on county manager evaluation. The county manager created a draft evaluation based on input from the county manager affiliate. So members of the county manager affiliate through NMAC sent some county manager evaluations. She created a draft from there. I did a bunch of online research on county administrator evaluations and what, so then Billy and I met and talked about the evaluations several times, and what we ended up with was the evaluation that came from the county manager affiliates has some edits. One of the things that we wanted to do was the affiliate's evaluation only had three levels of evaluation, so like good, bad, and great, or something like that. Good, average, and great, or something like that. And so the ones that I looked at had more than that, and so what we did was tear it down so that we had the five rating performances plus no basis for evaluation. And then we added the leadership section, which is at the end. Section for personnel accomplishments, we added the leadership section, section C. And then we also added the question, what actions taken by the county manager would you consider to be exemplary? So those are the major changes that have been made since you last saw this draft. And I would just say that this is probably the fourth time, I think, that we've submitted this draft evaluation to you guys since the first of the year.
I'd just like to thank you and Commissioner Billings for all the time that you've taken to do this and coming up with this.
So just make, thank you. Just make one more comment. The purpose of this is the county manager has never been evaluated. And we didn't actually, there was no county manager evaluation that we could find. So we sort of headed down this road assuming that the prior county manager had also never been evaluated. And as it says on the front page of the evaluation, it's essential that we establish an evaluation process so that we can help the manager grow into their job, and also so that we can evaluate if we feel like things are going well within the county. So the final thing I would say is that I brought this up a number of times previously that I, so this has been, I think we started down this road maybe last August. And at that time, I had had a conversation with Kevin about whether, he was at the front desk at that time, and I'd had a conversation with him about whether he had the capacity to put the evaluation that we came up with into Survey Monkey so that the county manager's direct reports could also participate in survey anonymously. And at that time, he said yes, he could do that. I don't know if that still falls within his area of responsibility, but I'm sure we have somebody that can put that together.
I think there's eight of those direct reports. It's the three department heads, Lucio Arch, Randy Villa, and Earl North. And then that would be Linda Voskis.
Renee Callaway.
Renee Callaway, Bernadette, and whoever, if Stephanie's still at the front desk, it would be her, and she's not, she's not. Okay, so there's eight then. And plus the five county commissioners. And my question to the commission is, the commissioners would, those would be anonymous, the commissioners would not be anonymous. Is that right?
That would be my preference.
Yeah, okay.
So whatever we filled out, that would be open to who? To the manager or to the public?
That falls squarely within the opinion part of personnel evaluations, I believe. So it would be, it would be private within the.
Evaluation itself.
Yeah.
Would be confidential.
Yeah. That would not be open to the public.
So it would be, it would go between the commissioner who made the comments and the county manager, or would the commissioners, all the commissioners and the county manager get to see all of?
I think you have to decide that. I mean, you're an organization.
Yeah, that's a blessing. But it's not gonna be public in any case.
Okay.
Actual personnel evaluations where you're providing opinions about their performance, those are protected.
Okay.
When would be the first proposed use of this tool?
Sooner the better.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking that is because there's some portions of this that I don't have the experience with. You know, let's say the budgetary process.
That's no basis for evaluation.
I don't think it's got a basis.
That's why that's in there.
Have we, and just a question, I know you guys, so is this gonna be something that's gonna be done yearly, annually?
It should be done annually, prior to the contracts.
And part of this, and the reason that I'm saying that is because if there's an issue that's determined mid-year, I think, you know, maybe, and I'm not saying change the forms, I'm not saying anything like that, using the same form, but, you know, sometimes, you know, I'm very against if you see something coming up, you know, giving that opportunity to correct some of those behaviors for the year-end evaluation. But that's just something to toss around. But as far as this, it's something that's great, that you guys work on.
If I understand what you're saying correctly, I think that, the kind of thing that you're talking about could be dealt with in an executive session as a personnel matter, right?
It could be, or it could be dealt one-on-one. If one commissioner has a concern, I think that commissioner should go speak directly with the manager. Unless I'm missing something.
Right. And I'm just trying to be fair, you know, if we see something that's happening in five, you know, we have a five-member commission that we all understand, my opinion would be that we all understand our concerns, and that there has been adequate time for correction.
In that case, I agree.
For the final evaluation.
No, I think that's a great idea. Well, I just wanted to clarify, because your answer to Commissioner Ponce's question was annually before a contract, and I'm guessing you mean you're expecting annual contract renewal discussions. Is that correct?
I'm just going based on what we've done in the past.
So I would just leave it at annually, so that we don't have to tie it to a contract renewal?
Then I'm good with that.
Oh, that's fine. I'm fine with that.
All right, I'm good with that too.
So if we said, if we just made a decision, the five of us, that we wanna do this, say, and have it done by the end of the fiscal year, for example, Santa Fe, then we could just make it so. We have the, we have the authority to make it so.
The rest of the process, would we have to put that into policy? Like you say, the Survey Monkey, and that, and then would this have to be compiled in somehow, some kind of manner? To get an average of scores, or, you know?
Good question for us.
Yeah, it seems like the part that needs to be clear is who does that?
Exactly.
And I'm not sure we need to spell out the detailed steps, as long as someone is gonna be doing it. That'd be my preference. Like, if we said the chair is responsible, just to punish the chair further, then how the chair does it, I'm happy to leave up to him or her. Rather than spell that, you have to use Survey Monkey, right? I can imagine five years from now, there's a better tool out there. Why would we spell that part out? But making sure someone's doing it, we need to make, you know, we need to do that.
Well, we can, the other thing that we could do is have like a subcommittee. So in reality, Commissioner Billings and I have been serving as a subcommittee on this process.
Perfectly good idea.
And so we could continue to do that as a, that the process is handled by a subcommittee of the commission. So three people going for it. I think two people doing this part of it is fine. But I think if we're gonna do the compilation and all that sort of stuff, I think it should be a subcommittee of three.
Which is a quorum.
Oh, right.
Which would have to be down in public meetings.
Right. Yeah, never mind.
I would suggest.
Okay, two is fine.
If we're talking about putting the information together, right, to present to the.
Pilot and present it.
And I think we're talking about prior to that, setting it up in some kind of accessible tool, and advertising it to the people who are supposed to fill it out, and following up with those people. I see there's pre-work and there's post-work.
Technical assistance with the setting.
Right. Absolutely.
That's all it's worth.
I guess right now, though, the thing is, this form, are we, are you guys good with that?
Well, I see this as a starting point. I think by the time we get to this next year, there'll be questions that we may wanna add, maybe something we wanna eliminate, I don't know. But as far as being able to foresee what we wanna, I mean, we don't wanna work on this, especially Commissioner Edwards. I think it's a good starting point.
Yeah, I think at this point, we have something that we can do the first evaluation with, so we can evaluate.
Evaluation.
Evaluation.
Oh, I wanna raise my head first.
A couple of, well, one proposed edit and one addition, if I might. And I also appreciate the work you guys have done. Makes it easy to review it and just edit rather than come up with it in scratch. The first is on, what in my sample is page three? It's under section one, and then A has an interesting division. So section one, A2, maybe?
Helpful and preventing.
The, no, that would also be A2, but see how it says the county manager, that's in a shaded box.
Oh, right.
That doesn't have its own letter. I'm not sure what that is. I think it's still within providing information, right?
Yeah, and I think there is, so I did have some challenges formatting it. And so what I would say is whatever was there isn't now, and I can retrieve it off of an older copy. But I did not bring my laptop.
Okay.
It has a subheading.
Okay. So I don't think you'd be comfortable in formatting, trying to identify the.
Actually, that's not true.
If, as written, it makes sense when you look at the sentences.
Yes, right. Exactly.
That's what I was just gonna say.
Everything about it makes sense, except it's the only shaded cell that has no letter, so I don't know how to refer to it, right? I'm just trying to refer to it right now. The third item in that unlettered section, whatever that's supposed to be, it starts with provides the county commission? What is the intention of on an equal basis? Is that not intended to mean each of us commissioners gets that information on an equal basis? It is, right?
I think so.
So I think it needs to say provides commissioners with information on an equal basis.
I would agree with that.
Well, I wish I could tell you.
The county manager, part three.
There you go. The county manager, ID three.
Provides commissioners.
Provides commissioners with information on an equal basis. And then, I guess I wanna acknowledge, the reality is, I believe that the chair gets more information than the rest of us. And that that's just a necessary part of having your business. Am I mistaken in my understanding? I can only really ask Commissioner Billings and Commissioner Ponce, doesn't the chair get information that the rest of us don't get? Because they're the chair?
I can't, I can't think of anything.
I think you do. I mean, I feel like there are times that you guys sign off on things, that I didn't know what was going on, but that's, you delegated that authority. Is that not true?
I'm trying to think of something, though. There wouldn't be common knowledge available to each member of the commission. Notwithstanding the fact that Commissioner Ponce would like more information, I get that.
Yeah, right. I'm not thinking about that, I'm just thinking about the process. It was my understanding you come in sometimes because you have to sign something quickly, or if there's an emergency situation, aren't you supposed to?
Yeah, I guess there have been instances I had to sign something for the hospital that was.
So what if we said provides the commissioners with routine information on an equal basis?
I was just thinking we could put parentheses, except information pertaining only to the chair.
Yes, because I know that Commissioner Ponce, being the chair, so any, anything coming from Santa Fe, sometimes they will say, hey, I want to address the county manager and the chairman.
That's right.
So things like that, there's going to be instances where they don't want, even when we've gone two meetings up there in Santa Fe, they'll say the county manager and the chairman. And I guess that's to avoid such a large group of people and stuff, but, you know, I know that the chairman will probably get information, you know, and then he'll be saying. sending that down to us.
So that's, I think, the key to what we're talking about here, is that just because it's the, you know, there might be a circumstance like what you're talking about, doesn't mean that the information is a secret from the rest of the commissioners. I think that's actually what this gets to, is whether the chair has powers, i.e., for lack of a better word, that the other commissioners don't, and I think that is not true. I think in signing documents and that sort of stuff, yes, but in, I don't think there should ever be a circumstance in which the chair has information that is not shared with the rest of the commission at the appropriate time.
Yeah, I can't, I agree, I don't think there's ever, was a time where this committee of information that wasn't, that couldn't have been shared with the rest of the commission.
Just that it wasn't at the same time. It was done later.
I think that might be the issue.
I think that is exactly what's coming.
Maybe the chairman would know first, but I think probably the intent is to.
Right, and I think that's.
Commissioners later.
Sorry. I think that goes back to the meetings we've had, or we've tabled things, or, I mean, as a chair, I would like everyone to be on the same page and have the same information, and not just say me as a chair having the information, and I think that's how we sort of got it to the last commission meetings about tabling things, where I would like all of us to know what's coming down into the agendas and what's coming up. So I think that's, you know, being the chair, I mean, do I need information? Yes, but not only do I, I feel that the commissioners also need that information to prepare for discussions, for their votes, for whatever it may be. So I think it goes back to what we've been tabling for the last two meetings also.
Okay. So are you happy with it as it's currently phrased, on an equal basis?
So I was just gonna say, to me, equal basis means that we all get it, doesn't, doesn't really mean that the chair gets it first, or we get it later, or whatever, just that we all get it. So if there's a better way to phrase that, I'm happy with that, but I think the important point is that we all get the same information.
So it would read then, provides commissioners with information on an equal basis and follows up in a timely manner. That's where it's okay for you? You have an edit?
I'm willing to hear, you know, an edit, I'm just saying that I think the important part is that the edit acknowledges the fact that we're all gonna get the information at some point.
And I think that's the key, that we all get the information.
Yeah, I have a problem with on an equal basis, to me, that means.
At the same time.
Which includes the timing, but I don't know how to address it in a, in an elegant way, and I'm fine thinking about it, and going, the second iteration of this will try to get it better. It's not an important enough issue to me to hold this up.
Well, what about provides county commissioners with information, well, I lost the word.
Provides. Provides.
Provides with information. With, as a prompt, is whatever, I mean, equal basis, I can see where that, where I want it to be equal for everybody to have the information, but, are we setting up failure to where, you know, maybe, you know, Commissioner Ponce is saying, well, she didn't give it to me equally, or, so I'm gonna go ahead, you know, I don't want to set anybody up for failure either, but, you know, provides county commissioners with information promptly and follows up in a timely manner, or something like that.
I like that, yeah.
Share among all the commissioners.
Excuse me?
Share among all the commissioners. Does that go? Mr. Chairman, I'm on it. Shares all relevant information with all of the commissioners.
And follows up in a timely manner?
Follows up. Did we say all?
That works perfectly for me.
That works.
There you go. Shares, and I don't know if you like, well, shares all relevant information to all of the commissioners.
And, yeah, and don't say on an equal basis, just shares it with all of them, that's perfect.
Shares all relevant information to all, all of the members, I didn't say every, all of the members.
Shares all relevant information with all members of the county commissioners. All members of the board of commissioners, accountable commissioners.
Say it all, commissioners.
All commissioners.
Say it four words.
How about provides all commissioners with information and follows up in a timely manner? That work?
So I actually like what Abby said.
Because we have the shares, shares all relevant information to all of the commissioners.
Can we say with?
With all.
It's the same way we say two.
Why'd you change the word provides to share?
I liked the way it sounded when Mary Alice said it. I think the commissioners did too.
Well, there, there is an implication in share, in the word sharing, that.
I think it's a word.
It sounds more inclusive, which is what we're really trying to get at.
That's right.
Okay. Are we gonna do this with each one of them?
Well, I don't, I don't mind, and my one minute is gonna be easier because it's not on here, so we're not changing something. I think we should add something, and this is now in section two, part B, financial management.
Can we go on?
You can call him, mister. Still, still.
I keep mixing up Mr. Chairman and Commissioner when I address you guys. Could we just add a B to that middle one? You just say A, B, C.
I make C, yes.
The one that doesn't have a letter?
Yep.
Then we have a.
Well, okay, but now it doesn't have a title?
The title's somewhere. But we don't have to have a title. We don't have to have a title.
I thought somebody was county managers and bowls, so.
All right, so let y'all look that up.
I mean, I, I, maybe Commissioner, would you help me with this question that I have? Somewhere I would like to see something that she responds to commissioners' questions on a timely manner. So I don't want a micromanager, so if somebody comes in and has a specific problem, I'll tell you this, somebody had an issue with a collection station, so if I go to the county manager web and I say, hey, I forgot about this problem, okay, I don't want a response back in a timely manner. And I don't know what's embedded in any of these.
I think it is. I think it's in the one we just basically.
The follows up in a timely manner.
Follows up in a timely manner.
I don't know if you're thinking it needs to specify clearly what she's following up on.
Are you talking about citizens' complaints?
Well, you know, in, in talking with Abby, there's things that, you know, we all get questions from the public. Okay, hey, this is happening, can you help me with this? And, and questions, so what I'm trying to do is go to the county manager and say, hey, they told me this, can you look into it and give me a response? So that, that's what I mean.
Are you talking about commissioners' response, yeah?
Commissioner Solis, I believe that is covered in section three, external relations under item A.
Yep.
Responds completely and in a timely manner to citizens' complaints.
That's citizens' complaints, but if you're talking about a commissioner, that's addressed in the one we're just talking about.
Yeah, and that's why I feel.
Follows up in a timely manner.
In this one.
I think we've covered both.
I think we've covered both.
A few problems there, covering that, right?
Seems like it to me. Javier could be satisfied.
Okay, what section was that in?
Uh, section three, IMA, the last one, under citizen relations.
Page five.
Page five.
Now, and the reason that I ask this is, one of my promises to constituents was, you bring complaints to me, you know, and I will make sure that they're looked at, whether they have a response that you're looking for or not. I just want to make sure that we have a response, that's all.
And I think that covers it uncritically, in my opinion. Responds completely and in a timely manner to citizens' complaints.
That's citizens.
And I think if a citizen's complaint is transmitted to the manager via a commissioner, it's still a citizen's complaint.
And if she doesn't, if you are conveying a citizen's complaint to the county manager, and the county manager doesn't respond in a timely manner, it's covered under this, it's still a citizen's complaint. Regardless of who it's conveyed by.
I, I think that all I want is response from the manager to say, hey, that issue, I responded to it, and that's it. I want to make sure that it's not, whatever.
Sure.
And I do care, because it says, is willing to meet with members of the community to discuss your speeches of concern, and then you have provides information to the public in a timely manner on matters which cause public reaction, response completely and in timely manner to citizen complaints. I think we've covered it all.
I'm good with it. Before Mr. Brown leaves on, would you give me the wording for, as we have it, for the one we changed?
Thank you. Page B?
Uh, yes.
So page three, B, the third column, shares all relevant information with all of the commissioners and follows up in a timely manner. Is that what you want, huh?
Yes.
Ready? What's your addition? Okay, so on the section two, part B, I would like to add a new item, and my wording is, are you satisfied with the county manager's collaboration with other county elected officials in budgeting, efficient spending, revenue collection, and cash flow planning? And this comes out of, you know, really things that I've been involved in, talking to other elected officials, and sort of trying to figure out their role vis-à-vis the county manager, right? It's a pretty awkward role, and we've seen that awkwardness in personnel matters, and we've seen it in budgeting, and really not very public, has been some of the cash flow issues where I've seen them. So I think.
We say again?
Can you say that again?
I sure can.
And where at, again, would you want that?
So this would be a new row, under section B, which is financial management.
Page four.
Sorry, section two, part B, page four, that's correct. So there are one, two, three, four, five, five current items under financial management, and I would add a six.
Number six.
So, makes sense to me, huh? Okay. And so my wording is collaboration with other county elected officials.
Now, other county officials or county elected officials?
Elected. She's already got, she's in charge of department heads.
Well, you didn't, you said elected the first time, but you didn't say it just now when you said it.
Thought I did.
You did not.
Collaboration with other county elected officials in budgeting, maybe I went really slow, so it got lost. Comma.
Right.
Efficient spending, comma, I knew what was going. Revenue collection, comma, and cash flow planning, period.
So I would like to add one other thing to that.
Okay.
And I don't, I'm happy to hear that it doesn't belong in this, but it seems to me like the other thing that needs to be in here is investments.
Well, that is cash flow planning, as a matter of fact, right? The role of the county manager in investments is, is not to make investment policy, right? That's up to us, and it's not to enforce investment policy, that's up to the treasurer. It's to collaborate with the treasurer to make sure those investments are liquid enough to satisfy the county's cash flow needs. So for me, investments, the only relevant part of investments is cash flow planning. If there's another part that you see as relevant.
Well, I just, I think putting the word investments in there.
Well, but she.
More thoroughly.
Well.
Cash flow plan.
That's not part of her job, so I wouldn't want to evaluate it. She, she can't affect what the treasurer decides to do with our investments.
No, but she can facilitate the report that the treasurer gives to us, say, hey, they need to know this, this, and this, and she needs to perfectly understand that, to go that effectual in a timely manner.
Well, what we're talking about is collaboration, you know, if she could collaborate.
So this is the part with her collaborating with the treasurer, not the part meeting our information needs. I think meeting our information needs is covered in section one, right? She needs to understand what we need to know and to help us get that information. So what you're saying is important, and I think it's covered in section one. And what I want to focus on here is her collaboration with other elected officials, which is a difficult part of the job, because she has no control over who those officials are gonna be.
No, but the collaboration with the treasurer is extremely important.
Yeah, as it is, you know, collaborating with the assessor, right? She's got to be able, whoever that is, has got to be able to collaborate with a variety of people.
And shouldn't she be able to collaborate on investments? I understand that it might be part of cash flow planning, but to make it clear, wouldn't you want the investments?
Well, give me an example. How would she ever collaborate on investments?
Well, I'd like to know where our money is invested.
Sure, but that's, so we could ask her to make sure the county treasurer gives us that in a report, but she has no voice in that, and we shouldn't expect her to have a voice in that.
So she shouldn't be able to ask the treasurer, where do you have our money invested?
She should be able to do that, but she should not be able to determine. She should not be able to determine where the money is invested, right? You're on a different level, you're talking about providing us information.
Right.
I'm talking about collaborating with them on specific things like cash flow planning. She cannot collaborate with the treasurer on investments. That's not part of the way this is set up in the New Mexican Constitution, right? The treasurer's in charge of that, and we are in charge of investment policy. The county manager has no role in either of those things, except to provide this information, which is covered in section one.
So one question I have on this is, hey, this assumes that the collaboration, so we can only evaluate one side of that collaboration.
That is correct.
So what happens if the other side isn't collaborating?
We give our county manager a chance to explain that to us, and we decide if her or his explanation is adequate, right? I, I don't want to set anybody up for failure either, and if the other person's not collaborating, I think we will be able to determine that. Yeah, and the other way, if it's just an excuse, because they don't want to work together, that's different. We need to hold our feet, and say, you gotta do this for the people.
No, and I totally get the stand, the county manager needs to talk to the clerk, to the treasurer, you know, to the assessor's office, to the sheriff, to make sure that as a whole, our county is doing okay.
Exactly.
You know, and if there's issues in, in those talks or collaboration, she maybe needs to bring it to us to see if we can facilitate any, any solutions.
So I'm fine with that. Addition.
All right. Okay, if you do have an example of where she can influence investments, I'm happy to add that. I don't know if we ended up covering that well enough.
So, so I hear what you're saying in your explanation, and I'm satisfied with that. I will just tell you that as long as it's come up, then one of the things, this is sort of like what Commissioner Solis did earlier in planting the seed, I want us to review investment policies.
Consider that appropriate?
Yes.
Yeah, I agree.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'm fine with that.
That's all I have, thanks.
Any other discussion?
No.
Okay, so we have a.
So I'm in my motion. So, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Billings needs to agree to amend this section.
Mr. Chair, I would like to amend my motion to approve this document to include the changes that we made in section one, IMB number three, as we have determined to read, shares all relevant information with commissioners and follows up in a timely manner.
With all commissioners, right?
With all commissioners, mhm, yes. And in section two, B, add item number six, collaboration with county elected officials in budgeting, effective, efficient spending, revenue collection, and cash flow planning.
Okay, so Commissioner works as amended her motion. Commissioner Billings, second amendment. Commissioner Billings is second amendment. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Motion carries.
Thank you, guys, folks.
So good, so good discussion.
Do we need a second motion to carry out the process, or that just goes without saying?
That just goes without saying.
So, Mr. Chair. That's up to you all.
Do you mean, I'm not sure I fully understood your question. Do you mean a second motion to say now we're gonna fill this out?
No, now, Commissioner Edwards and I will go forward and implement this as we discussed today.
Okay, is that what you want? I think it's a good idea to have that reminted.
You know what we did not do either is we never circled back around in the conversation about who is going to the pile at all.
That's exactly what I think is being discussed.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was bringing up.
Well, in addition to that, we were talking about having some kind of a survey monkey for department heads, right?
So, I would be willing to continue to serve as a committee of two to implement this, which would mean that we would, I don't know what your pleasure is, Commissioner Brown.
Sure, I would too, and would come up with a process where.
Come up with a process.
The direct reports could fill out some sort of anonymous survey, survey monkey.
I wanted to take it further. I wanted, you know, average gentleman to fill out some type of survey. I want everybody.
So that, that doesn't have anything to do with this evaluation, I think that would be separate.
Not the, not the documents or the process.
I'm not quite understanding.
Maybe I have it all modeled in my brain. Okay, so we approved the two.
Right.
And then I thought we were talking about the process for evaluation also. Okay, so part of the process would be to compile this, part of the process would be to get a survey from department heads, so I wanna add that we need a survey of county workers.
So, I know, I hear where you're headed with this, but I don't think that, in my opinion, I guess, because it seems to me like, we're talking about, one, we're talking about evaluation, evaluating the county manager's job performance, and then the other, we're talking about job satisfaction. And I don't think you can evaluate the county manager's performance based on people that they don't have direct contact with, that people who don't have direct relationship with. I think that's, now, I'm not trying to influence the evaluation process, but I'll put this part of this evaluation.
I think that, and I see where Commissioner Solis is coming from, I also see what you're coming from, but I think we could probably follow this process, what we said what we're gonna do, in evaluation by the commissioners, department, you know, department heads, do that, but I think maybe at a later time we could leave it open for further discussion down the road, to open up a survey for the employees, to gauge where we're at, and I think that would satisfy this discussion as part of the evaluation, and then the other piece maybe giving us a tool for customer satisfaction or in that, and I think that that's legitimate, what Commissioner Solis is saying, and I think it'd be better that we can get that input and look it over, and we have other ideas where it's going, but I think right now for the evaluation process, this is what we voted on, this is how we're gonna proceed, and I think maybe down the road we look at what Commissioner Solis is saying, is throwing out a survey to the employees and the outsiders right there, and I think that those are two great tools. And the only other thing with that, to me, what that helps us with is it helps us to see how we are as far as the evaluation, and what the department heads are with the evaluation, but it also serves as a piece to learn what are the workers, Van County workers, and are they in line with what we're seeing, are we seeing trends or examples of that? And I think that's a great idea from Commissioner Solis, but I would suggest that we pull that up with it.
So that's really what I was saying, is I think it's a separate issue from.
Well, I guess my feeling is that her direct understanding, we're gonna get a much more skewed view. I think we're gonna get a more honest view from the people that actually have to follow all the rules and have that. So, and it's okay to get a separate thing, it's not tied to evaluation, but I just think that's a valuable, I'm sorry, as a matter of fact, I think that ought to be part of the evaluation, you know? I think we're gonna get a much more honest view of what it is. I think that department heads will give us a more skewed positive evaluation or positive comments towards the manager than the average worker would.
And I agree with what you're saying, but I think that by gathering that information, the commissioners also have another tool to use as far as, as far as, or maybe we need to give Google or go the other way and give maybe a guidance, it's too far to go. But I think maybe we should keep it separate in a way, if I'm making sense?
Yeah.
I mean, it's still gonna be a tool that we, that's used and to see how, what order we fit as far as county employees, you know, with this, but, you know, the evaluation process is on this side too. It'd be good information and starting to just go circle.
I care what the county employees feel about, how they feel about their job, I care how they feel about their supervisor, and I care how they feel about the county manager. I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that most of them are in a position to evaluate with this much technicality of the county manager, maybe their own supervisors.
And I'm talking about even looking for them to have, you know, something like this, it would be a much smaller, you know, issue, you know, where. And have any of you ever been to Western at the end of its class, you know, period, or it's a Lester, every student you value is a teacher.
Right, sort of, I'm getting it. And I think that's a good idea, that they would evaluate maybe their department head or their boss, but not, the students wouldn't necessarily evaluate the university president's job.
No, no, excuse me, I'm sorry, but, I mean, I agree with you, Commissioner, that probably needs to be done, and it would be a good tool for us. The only problem I have is with what we have in front of us, or what we voted on, certain Van County employees aren't gonna have the, I guess, knowledge, if she's gotten back to people that are putting complaints, they're not gonna have the knowledge about the cash flow planning, they're not, so it would be something that we put this, it's okay, this is for evaluation, and maybe come up with a different form for the employees to do a survey on that side of it.
Well, it might not be relevant to the whole document, but it certainly would be relevant for us.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
One of the commissioners Solis came up with a proposed evaluation, proposed survey for county staff, and then we actually would have something concrete to be discussing, because I hear him say he's not talking about doing this with staffers, and my only concern with that would be, it really should be focused on evaluating the county manager, because we should never be in the position of evaluating the different department heads, right? That's not our job, that's the county manager's job. So, I like your idea, I think there's room for questions like, has the county manager created a good working environment for you?
Exactly.
You know, stuff like that. And, you know, maybe it's a five-question survey, and then we could actually talk concretely, hey, do we want this to be part of our evaluation process of the county manager? Would that work for you?
Mr. Chair, I just wanna make sure that when we, if you do put together something like this, we have to structure it so that it's confidential, and so that we can keep it from being disclosed to a lot, because I think it will fall from, I just need to look at it before we.
If we do something like survey monkey.
I just want.
We can set it up so that it's confidential.
I'd like to see what, I'd like to see what other counties.
Commissioner Edwards, doesn't FMI have some sort of a system for that, for workers get some input into managers and stuff like that?
Yes, there is, I believe it's a 360, but it's a lot, it has that information and that tool used for development, and mostly a lot of soft development, shows you the areas where, what you need to work on, and how you need to develop, gives you timeframes, gives you, you know, gives you training that you might have to do and attend, you sit down with, whether it be a supervisor who's intended to go through that. So, you know, like what Commissioner Brown said, there is, I agree with what you're saying, if you can come up with something and then we can do that, that'd be great. I mean, I think we can look at it before we even discuss it, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Well, then, I would ask for some help. I would ask for another commissioner to go to help me look at things, it's always better to have, you know, two heads, and a simple question survey, that could be anonymous, or, you know, with an area of comments or something. Mr. Brown?
I'd be happy to try to help, Pavi, if you think I can use them.
Oh, yes, sir. Well, and we have two people on the set hour, maybe then an extra one, I would be much simpler.
I think you're right. Well, so, maybe to formalize it, I'll make a motion that Commissioner Edwards and Commissioner Billings proceed to implement the evaluation tool for the county manager that we just approved.
And I'll second that. Okay, we have a first by Commissioner Brown and a second by Commissioner Solis. Any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We do not need a motion for you guys to.
Let me see, so, because there's no action yet, it wasn't even on the agenda.
No.
We're just gonna forge ahead as a committee of two.
Forge it ahead. Mr. Chair, I move that we go into executive session to discuss personnel matters regarding the county attorney pursuant to NMSA 1978 1015-1-H2, personnel matters regarding county manager pursuant to NMSA 1978 1015-1-H2.
Taking on the first by Commissioner Edwards?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Solis.
Do we have any sense about actions that might be necessary afterwards?
I don't think there's, there won't be any action.
I can anticipate any action.
I can anticipate that. Roll call?
Hello, phone's good. Commissioners Brown, Edwards, Billings, and Solis, are you all aware that you will be entering executive session?
Yes, yes.
Thanks for listening. Does somebody supposed to hammer it and say you're in executive session?
Executive session.